Stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Trustee Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tate?
Trustee Todd?
Here.
And Trustee Zupan?
Here.
I'll accept the motion to go into executive session for discussing the personnel matters.
So moved.
It was moved by Trustee Zupan, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
And Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. We'll be right back, option. All right, Madam Clerk, could you, I'm sorry, I'll accept the motion to reconvene.
So moved.
It was moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Madam Clerk? Please call her up.
Trustee Brewer?
Here.
Grant?
Here.
Trustee Jones?
Here.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Here.
Trustee Zupan?
Here.
Motion carried. All right, next item from the agenda, motion to approve your minutes. I'll entertain a motion to approve the revised regular board meeting minutes of August 8th, 2017. I have a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, may I make one comment relative to these minutes that's getting ready to be?
Is it to this one, is it alternate?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Under public comment on the document that I had, and I could not see the person, however, I know of a person named with initials of PC, so I entered her name on there, but I am totally uncertain if it was that person, and I just wanted the Board of Trustees to know that before we get started.
I'm sorry, which one are you referring to?
August 8th.
On August 8th, on the second page, under public comment, that third point where it has pet couch discussed, my fight?
It was Kathy Betcher.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you want to enter that? Do you want to enter that as a?
Correction.
Correction. Do you want to enter that as a correction?
Correction.
So do you want the motion to say with necessary with corrections?
Correct.
Okay, I'll go back to Linda Todd and to Trustee Jones that entered the motion. Would you like to modify the motion with necessary with corrections?
I'll modify the motion with the necessary corrections.
Okay, it was moved and modified, I'm sorry, it was moved with the modification of Trustee Todd and seconded by Trustee Jones. Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
No.
I would if I said anything. Okay, all right, okay. I'm trying to, where I was asked by alternating the names, but totally agree, Kathy, just give it to me. Okay. It's okay. So, I'm, yes, thank you.
Motion is carried. I'll entertain a motion to approve the last committee meeting minutes for September 5th, 2017. I'll entertain a motion. It was moved by Trustee Todd, seconded by Trustee Jones. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
Yes.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Public comment, all questions and comments must be directed to the mayor. Each speaker may comment on any matter contained to the business of Sawt Village. Each speaker is allowed one opportunity to speak up to three minutes and may not engage in debate. Please step up to the mic.
Heidi Parker?
Is the mic on?
Heidi Parker, Sawt Village. There were no copies of the minutes in the bag, and I wondered if the minutes of September 5th have been corrected. I mentioned that in the last public comments. Actually, Inwood is mentioned in these minutes, and he was not, he was not present. Has that been correct? I wonder if that has been correct?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I couldn't hear what you said, yeah, yeah, it has been corrected, but you're right there, and you said there's no? Okay. All right.
Second, I would like to know when the FOIA responses will be posted to website. They have not been updated since July.
Yes?
Rose Ketchum? Mayor, I'd like to know if you check the senior center after every doings, because we went in there after the vet's luncheon, and it took us 40 minutes to clean and put the table back right after the vet's luncheon. That's on Sunday. November 18th, on a Saturday, we went by about 7:30 in the morning, and the lights were on in the senior center. We went by about 7:30 in the morning.
On November?
November 18th.
Okay.
We went by about 7:30 because we're picking up our cat, and the lights were on, so I thought they were cleaning. Later in the afternoon, we went shopping, they're still on, and still no cars around. Sunday, when the bluegrass came in, the lights were still on, not only in the senior center, but there was still the women's bathroom. And I'd like to know, whatever happened to the books that Ms. Clay brought in? They haven't been put in the senior center? And one other thing, I'd like to know about the bricks, are they coming in? That's all.
The, November 11th, for the seniors, I'm sorry, for the Veterans Day, is that what you were referring to?
Yes.
Okay, we did, that was brought up last meeting.
Well, I wasn't here.
Okay, and we, it was a dispute back and forth, so, I mean, no, I didn't come in that following Sunday to look and see, but it was a dispute back, so some people said it was taken care of, some said it wasn't, so.
Well, I came in, and I had a suite floor, it was a table.
Okay.
Oh, and another thing, we moved the tables from up in the corner, we put them back in the, where the TV is, because we're afraid they're gonna fall or slide down, so we put them all back in the light TVs.
Thank you for that, but as I stated, that next meeting after the 11th, that following Tuesday, it was brought to our attention that something like that had happened, so, like I stated before, it was going back and forth, so hopefully it doesn't happen again. No, I don't come to everyone, I come here every morning, I mean, every Monday, but for that particular, if you did it that Sunday, and did that question, I would see it that Monday. So I will come on Sunday, and as far as the bricks, we're gonna, I'm gonna find out what happened, and the books, I'm not aware of, maybe the person that's in charge of the seniors could probably give you a little bit more insight on that. Mr. Farmer, I don't see him here right now, but I'll find out from him about the books.
James Hunter?
Can I speak up?
Just a little small concern. I know Trustee Tate's not here tonight, and I was told that he had a family member, so that he didn't show up for the event, I think. I wonder, is he all right, everything good? What's going on with him, why he's not here tonight?
That was it?
Yeah.
Okay, after the meeting tonight, I'll explain that to you, but he is okay.
Okay.
Okay, any more questions? That's it, okay. Reports of officers, mayors report. The first thing I'd like to do is read the proclamation. This is for December 3rd, which we won't be meeting that day, but I'll read the proclamation. It says, whereas on December 3rd, 2017, marks Illinois' 199th birthday, as Illinois became the 21st state in the Union, December 3rd, 1818. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will be a year-long celebration between December 3rd, 2017, and December 3rd, 2018, which will be our state's 200th birthday. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will remind us all that every day, Illinois, amazing things are born, built, and grown. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial will honor the many ways that Illinois has influenced American history, achievements, culture, innovations, and more. And whereas Illinois' bicentennial is a once-in-a-lifetime invitation to fall in love with Illinois all over again, and whereas together we can inspire pride in Illinois and show the world what makes this state so great. And whereas, our community should encourage citizens, organizations, businesses, congregations, and cultural and educational institutions to participate in the year-long celebration by submitting applications for the endorsement of their events and projects by Illinois' bicentennial on the participant page at illinois200.com. And therefore, be it resolved that Sawt Village endorses the efforts of the Illinois' bicentennial and encourage all citizens to participate in celebrating the upcoming year by visiting illinois200.com and using hashtag Illinois Proud. Now therefore, I, Derek Burgess, Mayor of Sawt Village, do hereby proclaim December 3rd, 2018, as Illinois' bicentennial, 2017, as Illinois' bicentennial day in the village of Sawt Village. I would get, copy will be on the record. We did get a flag from that, and it will be, it'll be displayed, and we haven't decided yet, because we only got one flag, so we're trying to see which is the best area we can do it, but we will be displaying the bicentennial flag, I don't know if we have room here or at the police station, but I think it's gonna be the police station that will be displayed. So there's a flag. But it's something that I don't want to put out every single day, because it won't last the year, so we can bring it out, bring it back in. Also, I want to officially ask the Board and ask for a motion to appoint Ms. Judy Sufin as treasurer.
So moved.
It was moved by Trustee Zupan, seconded by Trustee Jones. Madam Clerk, could you please call her up? Sorry, are there any questions? Madam Clerk, please call her up.
Let me understand something, I thought last week that we, not last week, week before, that you had appointed her, and, because?
I did for a 30-day period, but it wasn't on the agenda, so therefore, it's on the agenda now, so I would like formally to do it so I can swear her in.
Okay.
Any other questions? Madam Clerk?
Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate?
Motion is carried. Madam Clerk, could you please, Ms. Sufin, could you please come forward?
I, Judith Gere Sufin, having been appointed to the office of Village Treasurer in the village of Sawt Village, in the counties of Cook and Will counties, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of Village Treasurer to the best of my ability.
Ladies Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a few things that I want to bring to you guys' attention. The first one, I'd like to give you an update on where we are with the recodification. After it was approved that we would move forward with the recodification of our ordinances, our zoning board informed us that the zoning in the current ordinance manual, and that's online, was not accurate, and that the numbers did not coincide with the ones that we actually operate from here in the village, so we communicated with them, we shared with them the zoning code, and asked them for a price, and they provided us a price. Know that we're not asking for this to happen, I'm just giving you an update, okay, so I don't want anyone to collapse on us. But the total estimate to do both would be $11,322. Initially, we had allocated the $7,000 and something forward. So, I know that I cannot make that determination, however, I need to bring it to you so that you can make that determination. With this last correspondence that was sent, the price that she had, that they had provided to us before, which was the $7,652 for everything, it has now been changed, and the price, if we were to only go with the ordinances as we had talked about, will now be $7,547. So it's not that much, but it's a little less. So I'm not certain if it, I don't think that it requires a vote, I was just giving an update. Unless you want to go with including the zoning code, then we can bring that back to vote another time. If not, then you're just notified.
You can put that on the agenda for the committee to hold.
Okay, that sounds good. Someone mentioned an update on FOIAs, and I know sometimes we're here and other times we're not, but FOIA requests and the responses are now, there's posted outside on the board out there, as well as I give a report monthly. What is on the website will not be the actual documents that were submitted in response to the FOIA. We're just letting you know who the requestor is and if we responded, and I'll give you the date. The first FOIA that we received since the last report in October, we received one October the 10th, that was from the Attorney General Public Access Coordinator, and that was a request for review of former Mayor Burgess. He responded through United States Post Service. The status is pending, because we've not heard back from that office. On October the 11th, we received another FOIA request from Trustee Brewer, and the request at that time was a report of drug seizure funds, that was referred to Mohan, and that was responded to on 10/12, so we considered that closed. On 10/12, we received a FOIA from Trustee Brewer, and she was requesting data from water building from May 2016 to 9/9/2017, and that request was denied simply because we do not have that data, and according to FOIA, we do not have to recreate a report, so that was denied. On October 31st, we received one from Attorney Patrick Welch. He wanted employment contracts executed between Chief Koloski and the village, that was referred to HR, and was responded to 7, November the 7th. On 11/1, we received a request from Heidi Parker. She wanted the names and amounts of the two settlement agreements that had been discussed previously. I handled that one through email, and that case is closed. On 11/6, we received a request from Willie Robinson, and he pointed a listing of all village employees, stock titles and salaries, a listing of new village employees, mayor's assistants, and new supervisors, that was referred to HR and responded to November 15th. That case is closed. On November the 8th, Trustee Brewer requested all commercial insurance policies, that was responded to on November the 20th through email. That particular response was in access of 300 pages, and generally, the mayor has put out a memo as of today that we will follow FOIA regulations for everyone, whether they are the public or within, that if a request or response totals more than 50, then we will be charged 15 cents per page, and each side constitutes separate pages, and that same will apply even if we send it through email transmission. On November the 9th, we received a request from Michelle Armin. She asked for all bank statements from CNN from September 2017 to the current, and that was submitted November the 13th, it's closed. On November the 20th, Trustee Brewer asked us for all of the invoices from Republic Services from November 2015 to July 2016, that is pending. Also, on November the 20th, Trustee Brewer requested documents from Cook County that show overpayment of property taxes, the date and amount of overpayment, verbal or written documents that show repayment schedules and the balance owed, that one is pending as well. On November 20th, again, Trustee Brewer submitted another request, asking for all invoices on behalf of Dr. Strata, her salary, and she also requested a handbook, that one is pending as well. And then on November 27th, Trustee Brewer requested receipt registers, detailed balance reports for the period of May 1st, 2007 to the present, that was referred to Director Mohan, and that case is pending as well. That completes FOIAs for the past month. In your packet, you received?
I've got a question.
Okay.
You have a question for her?
Yes. You indicated on 11/6, now somebody asked about a question, a FOIA request for Autway sounded referred to HR, also on 11/9, the CNN, 11/20, but those two FOIA requests, do you have a response to that, so can I get a copy?
We'll talk about that offline, but I'm certain that you can, but that's not necessarily something that needs to go forth right this minute, okay?
No, I'm asking, generally, I asked verbally, did I put it right? So I'm asking verbally now.
Yes, Trustee, you may get a copy of that.
Thank you very much.
Isn't that a good question?
Hold on just a second, we're gonna, we're gonna do this the right way. If you want to ask a question, it's no problem, but we need to get clarification from the chair first before we ask questions, so we're just not gonna start just asking questions. There's no problem with asking questions, but we're gonna do it the right way, and ask, you know, get recognized first, and then we can ask a question. Any of that, so Trustee Zupan?
Yes, sorry, Mayor. My question was, isn't that request of Trustee Brewer, is yet another FOIA request by her, by virtue of her wanting copies of other people's FOIA information?
I will not consider it as a FOIA request, I would just provide that information. Know that whenever I can provide the information, I would rather just freely give it, rather than to be labored with people heading to FOIA and responding to FOIAs. I don't have a problem with sharing, I just thought that it was, I thought we could have talked about it tomorrow.
Well, I guess my concern comes in, sorry, my concern would be if we get into the threshold of needing to charge for anything that's more than 50 pages, and I don't know how many pages these other requests are, but, you know, if there's a charge, we encounter, you know, might, sorry.
If any of these other FOIAs were in excess of 50 pages, then, and those folks had to pay for the additional pages, then I would expect any one of us who also wanted that same information would also have to pay the 15 cents a page for the excess, I think, which is all.
Yes, so that's something that, you know, this, that memo from the mayor just came out today, so I think that we are going to have to establish a policy so that it is consistent across the board, and I thank you for bringing that.
And I thought there was an ordinance, actually, that you might want to check, that there was something in an ordinance previously approved some years back about FOIA information.
I've got another question.
Excuse me? We still have to come through the chair, which is.
That's, question, Mr. Mayor?
Okay.
Okay. To get copies of FOIA requests that's already been out there, okay, do you have, or can I get a copy of whatever regulations you guys are following that shows that you have to charge for electronic disposition of FOIA requests, you know, that you sent to a requestor, you know, that trained version? Can I get a copy that regulation or something shows that you spent more than two hours on that particular FOIA, and that you charged us 15 cents a page?
I'm not certain.
I just like the old copy of the regulations, you know, that covers this, so, you know, when they ask, I'll be able to provide them with that information.
The process will be, and I know this, this is according to statutes governing FOIA, if I receive a request that totals more than 50, then I am to write you a letter letting you know that it is over 50 pages. I will state the particular statute that it refers to, and then let you know how much your overage will cost you, and then after pay. and then after payment is made to the village, then I will release the requested information. That is the process where that's concerned.
So what can I do?
And that is according to the statutes of FOIA. As I stated, when I write you the letter, once you go over, then you will be able to see it and you will be able to reference it. But then also know that I have provided so much information from when I've gone to conferences that deals with FOIA's, OMA and all of that. So I'm going to just invite you to look at your materials that have been provided by me because the information is there.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that, is that in the report? Is this in the report?
No.
Okay, 'cause I'm trying to-
I know, I know. And I just want to go real quick. There's one other piece relative to minutes that I put in the packet, but for the sake of time, I'm not going to go over that today relative to minutes. But as I said, I'm constantly providing information as a learning tool so that we can move forward. I do want to just say that we got a piece of correspondence from Briggover, Virginia High School, addressed to you, mayor, thanking you for your willingness to help students and families and know that, you know, investing their students is a major, major accomplishment. They greatly appreciate it and they just said, "Thank you for all you do for our students. You are part of their lives too." I thought that was nice. And that, one last thing, and that's Christmas cheer. That information is on the back table. I'm hoping that everyone will come and support at least one family, if not two. And anyone that would like to come and help, gift wrap some of the boxes or if you want to come on the 15th to have stuff in the boxes, you're more than welcome to do so, just give me a call. That really completes my report.
Thank you.
Question, mayor?
Yes.
Clark, Madam Clark, would you please share the source of the C and R party?
Yes, when we first, when we were first elected and you weren't on board with us at that time, but Olson and Sturtevant had us at their office and they gave us a few hours in service and this is one of the handouts that we received here.
Village engineer, Mr. Jim Zarnik.
Thank you, mayor, no problem.
Treasurer's report, Ms. Judy Sutcliffe. Reports from the apartment heads, we start with Finance and Administration Director Mohan Raugh. And if you didn't get anybody's story? Give it up, Mike.
Yesterday, myself and mayor and treasurer met with the auditors regarding fiscal years 2016 and 17. The auditors are going to send us the final draft of the audit pretty soon once we have audit reviewed and it will be filed with Illinois Comptroller as well as the TIF reporting is done for 2016, 17. The collector's and financial report for October 2017 will be available either on December 4th or December 5th at the earliest. And also I have a request to the mayor and the board. We received a late billing from Comcast towards our internet that comes to about, the July and September bills are due since because we did not get the bill on time and we got the shut-off notice this morning. Total dollar amount that is due is $5,317.68. I would request the mayor and the board, please approve the payment so that we can include it in this payment. And there is one request from Chief of Police regarding, there are four officers that are, they are going for the emergency medical services training. They're going to get, we are going to get two freebies for the price of four. A $200 of hand check needs to be, I mean, $200 check needs to be approved to be paid tomorrow so that the chief can send four officers for the training for this.
So you're asking for $5,317.68 to be voted out from Comcast and how much for the?
$200.
That's it, just $200 for?
$200 for peak and training services.
So that'll be $5,517.
Yes, sir. If any further explanation is needed for the $200, chief can provide the information.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to ask, as this motion now while the chief is here, if there's any questions.
Well, I just, I have a question. So Comcast sent us a shut-off notice today for, for a bill for $5,000 for July and August?
July and September.
July and September.
We did not get the bill.
So they didn't send it to us until?
No.
Wow.
Mayor, can I just make a comment?
Sure.
So that sounds to me like we don't have any control in place to say, "We're expecting a bill from Comcast every month, where is it?"
Normally the bills come to either Public Works Department or Comcast, but I have no clue about this one. We got other bills except May and Sep, I mean, July except.
I just, I mean, to her point, you know, every month, you know, you get a light bill, a gas bill, a water bill. So just 'cause you didn't get a bill in the mail, doesn't mean that you don't pay the bill or follow up on it.
For some reason, we didn't get the bill, that's all I can say.
Okay, the board heard the pleasure of the Finance Directors. I'll entertain a motion to pay the amount of $5,517.68, $5,317 is for the Comcast pass due and $200 for the police to go do their seminar. I'll entertain a motion. I got a question. Just a second, just a second for you to ask a question.
I'll second you.
Okay. It was moved by trustee Todd, seconded by trustee Zupan. Question.
Okay, go on. Going forward, how do we prevent this from happening again? I mean, we all know, I mean, your cardinal comes, you know it's coming every month. If they don't send it to me in the mail, that don't mean I got a free month. So who's tracking what and why this wasn't tracked? Someone is accountable to make sure that the bills are being paid and if that bill didn't come in, hello Comcast, yeah, I need a bill. It's just that simple. And I want to know who's accountable for that and why we didn't get that phone, make that phone call. Nobody.
All I can say is I did find out about it today. It was brought to my attention today and it was dated back, and I don't know where it was sitting and where it's been and that's why I brought it to the board. And it does say on the bills that if it's not paid for by tomorrow, the Comcast services in this building will be shut off. So that's why I brought it to the board. I asked the same question, virtually got the same answer, that it was not discovered until today. So that's why I'm bringing it to the board. But all in all, if we don't pay that bill, it will be shut off Wednesday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
That's not acceptable.
I didn't say it was. I'm just saying what I, what I saw.
I mean, that can't happen. I mean, I understand. I mean, I don't know the severity up there, but this could have been invented. If, I don't know who's in charge of paying bills then. I mean, I mean, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, would it be best to just revise this?
Tell me.
Would it be best to just amend this, the accounts payable instead?
You said, "Would it be best to amend it?"
Add the $5,000 that would have the total-
I mean, we could do that either way. The reason why I'm doing it now because they may have had some questions for, for the $200. That's the only reason why I'm doing it now. If the police chief is not here, can't answer those questions. If they had any questions, obviously there's no questions for that. That's why I asked to have it voted on now and not be part of the accounts payable that's due. And I can just, I don't think, like I said, I saw it today and instead of going through all the process, I asked to have it and I wanted it to be put on, not put on, but discussed here at the board. Why we have whole board instead of doing a consensus yet. So there is a motion on the floor.
Mr. Mayor, I do have one question regarding the Comcast amounts. Of that $5,317.68, is that strictly our charges for the two months or is there a late fee in there? And if so, how much is the late fee?
There is a late fee? All right, any other questions?
How do you not have a late fee if the bill's from July? This is November.
I saw the bill and I didn't see a late fee on it, I just saw the amount. So I'm, I'm thinking that there's a late fee built in because it was an itemized, it showed the actual amount that's due and it did state that if it wasn't paid by this date, they would shut it off. But I didn't see an itemized, itemization.
Mr. Mayor, one last comment. I'd like to see the Finance Director come up with, A, a control to ensure that we know which invoices or bills we should be receiving on a periodic basis and how we know that we're getting them timely. That's for the things we're getting monthly, quarterly, annually, yearly. And I'd like to see that before the next board meeting, if possible.
Okay. I'm sure trustee Grant will be working along with that. Any other questions?
Are we just voting on this particular, I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, on this particular?
We're voting on the motion for to pay $5,517.68. And the part of it is Comcast of $5,317 and the other part is $200 for-
Mr. Mayor, I got a quick question. I heard you say, Mr. Raugh, that a bill comes here where a bill goes to Public Works?
The Comcast sometimes go to Public Works.
Is there a reason for that?
Like, what's the address?
It's supposed to come here?
Like, should it come to the address that's on the bill? So 21801, shouldn't this be where it comes?
It should be, yes.
Can you get the other one?
Um, the bills all come in the bill, Tom.
Oh, okay.
Don't come to Public Works?
No, they get dispersed to the mailroom, to the mailroom slots, that's what I received.
Can't hear you.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay. You said that in the mailroom, it does come to Public Works in the mailroom and may get dispersed in his box. And that's, that's the only thing, but you're right, it does come to Public Works Department. Any other questions?
Got a comment, Mr. Mayor. When we first started back in May, one of my requests that I made is that you provide, well, whoever provides us a list of vendors and their due dates. At that time, we told us that there's no way we could go through and get all that. So now we're getting that information because that, since trustee Zupan has put it out there again. So now we're going to get a list of vendors and what they're supposed to pay and the due date. Are we going to get that soon?
I mean, not that far away. Oh, yes.
That wasn't what I asked for. Well, okay, well, let me rephrase that then. I'm asking for those vendors that we have to pay continuously every month and their due dates and how much is generally due. You know what, bills are due every month, we would like to know so we can be looking for the payment if it's not on accounts payable. That would help us as trustees know what money's going out, what hasn't been spent, what should be spent. So I'm asking for a list of vendors. Okay, a list of vendors and their due date and generally how much it costs.
Okay, trustee, first of all, there's not going to be a generation of all bills going to the trustee. That's, I've seen part of that and that's-
I'm not asking for all bills.
You said all-
No, I said the list of vendors.
Same thing, all bills. That's the list of vendors, the bill, your vendors-
The name of the vendors and how much we're supposed to pay every month. That has nothing to do with the invoice.
We still have a motion on the floor. Let me take care of the motion first and afterwards, doing your part, we can talk about that. But right now, we have a motion on the floor. Any other questions pertaining to the motion on the floor? Madam Clark, would you please call the room?
Trustee Zupan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Stay.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
No.
Trustee Case?
Yes.
Motion's carried. Madam, trustee Brewer, after the, in, I cannot, I'm likely to take up everybody's time going back and forth discussing how the bills and who can see. Anybody can come in and ask to see the bills. But as I stated before, any trustee can come by and ask, but if it's going to cost two or three hours worth of time, then you have to set aside an appointment because I'm not going to have them take two or three hours out of their day like that unless there is an appointment. But there's no problem with you seeing what the bills that have to be paid and you're right, the ones that are on the, I mean, the ones that are on accounts payable are not nowhere near the bills that we have. So that shouldn't be a problem. And then we'll go from there. Fire Department?
Are we finished with, I would like to ask Finance Director Mohan a question before he leaves.
Sure.
On the accounts payable for media checks, you have a William Marlowe here, reimbursement for a media check, what is that for?
The toll refund that was ordered by the Circuit, Circuit Court of the County.
Circuit Court?
Yep.
So they ordered us to pay him $500 for some reason?
Yeah.
And the Popeyes chicken that was for them today?
That's what the veterans paid a lot for.
Okay, also, there's a change in the Republic Service on page one. I think that went up again.
It went up to-
God, it reached, went up?
Yep.
Okay, also, we get in this HR person, but we don't ask for it. That's, that's all I ask for.
Fire Department report will be read by Chief Kowalski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. The Fire Department responded to 17 calls, 17 calls, six fire alarms, one odor investigation, one vehicle fire, one stove explosion, one vehicle accident, two gas leaks, two still alarms, one ambulance PD assist, one car in the pond. That's a difference, one car in the pond. And one Pedro five, that's the end of this report.
Okay, thank you. Now your report, chief.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, trustees. Just a couple of observations, that $500 that trustee, that was a return of their original fine that we-
So, the village was not out any money. That individual's vehicle was towed to get their vehicle out. They had to pay five hundred dollars. They paid the five hundred dollars and they contested it in court. The court ordered that we return their five hundred dollars. So, the village is out no money.
So, that's a tow fee.
That was a tow fee, correct. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
In reference to the two hundred dollars, and thank you, uh, Beacon Training, uh, is conducting, uh, training for emergency first responders through the South Suburban Emergency Response Team. And since they're using our facility to, to conduct the training, they gave us three, or two free spots and fifty dollars, uh, per officer for this training. That's a emergency, uh, tech, uh, emergency medical technician training. And I felt that this was definitely worthwhile to have at least two officers per shift to have this type of training. Uh, it focuses on if an officer is injured while in the line of duty, uh, somebody could respond, uh, immediately in addressing whatever wounds, uh, they received. So, I definitely thank for fifty dollars per officer and two free. That's a pretty good deal. Now, back to my report. For the last two weeks, we responded to four hundred and eighty-six calls for service with seven arrests. Uh, and please note a few cases of interest. On November twelfth, officers responded to a report of a shooting victim in the area of the businesses located at Sock Trail and Jeffrey. Victim was taken to St. Margaret's Hospital, but, uh, due to the severity of the gunshot wound, was transported to Stroger Hospital. An offender was identified by witnesses and evidence was collected by our detectives who continue to work on that investigation. Uh, on November twenty-second, officers received, received the call of shots fired in the two twenty-one hundred block of Talandis. Upon arriving, officers located the offenders, took them into custody and recovered a handgun. Victim could not be found at that time, but the shooter was found to be in possession of a weapon. Detectives were investigating that matter and pursuing felony charges on all the subjects. Then on, uh, November twenty-fourth, officers responded to a shooting on the two nineteen hundred block of Clyde where they found two victims with gunshot wounds. Both were taken to St. Margaret, St. Margaret's Hospital with non-life threatening wounds. While at the off, uh, at the hospital, officers received another call for another gunshot victim from the same area. Victim was transported to St. Margaret's, then airlifted to Stroger Hospital for more serious wounds. Our detective at the time was on call already activated by the South Suburban Major Crimes Task Force for homicide which occurred in Park Forest. Our shooting is now an active investigation. And, uh, just, you never want to hear about any type of shootings in our town, but there's a correlation between all three of those and that's why I bring them to your attention today. So, it's just not random people shooting at each other. Uh, there, there's definitely a connection with all, all of those shootings. And due to the severity and the nature of this, I will not discuss it any further. Thank you. Uh, the Sock Village Police Department has recently created, on a, on a nicer note, uh, the Sock Village Police Department has a Facebook page now. The social media be used to make announcements and provide information that's useful to residents of the village. I realize that there was a Sock Village Police Department, uh, Facebook page before, but as this one gets more use, this one will be the one that pops up first. Uh, email, I recently set up an anonymous email for Sock Village citizens. So, if you wish to email the police department with any type of information, you could do so by emailing. And there's a pretty simple one. It's SockVillagePD, all one word, at gmail dot com. Again, it's SockVillagePD at gmail dot com. I'm the only one that has access to this email, so this information will stay confidential unless you want it released. Lastly, uh, the Sock Village Police Department has set up a GoFundMe page to help fund this year's shop for the cop program. We have collected, uh, quite a bit of money so far and I appreciate all of, uh, everyone who has donated. If you're interested in helping, please go to the GoFundMe page. It's G O F U N D M E website. And when you go to that, you just put in Sock Village and it'll pop up. It'll have our, it'll have a gold star on there and you can donate that, that way. We're still working on, uh, a date with the schools, so you can still donate at this time. Uh, I will, uh, work with the village clerk to let you know when the cutoff date is. And that's the end of my report.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Just a quick comment for everyone's benefit. So, you know, uh, several months back, we had some snacks and pop and water out back and then we continued to have water and snacks available to the employees in, back here. And as a result of that, we, uh, did just give the chief sixty dollars tonight as the proceeds of, of that endeavor. So, I just want to make sure everybody do that. Thank you.
That, that was, uh, a great help and that was with the, also with the help of National Night Out. And we, we had somebody here today, actually several people today, give us donations. So, I want to thank everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Emergency Management Agency Director Alan Vabre.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and board. In addition to the, uh, fire department calls, we also assisted the Illinois State Police on a major accident at three ninety-four in Glenwood Dia Road. And we also had a disabled vehicle. Just a reminder, folks, when there is an emergency vehicle, red and blue lights, fire truck, anything blocking the roadway, please, please show the kindness and the respect to abide by what is being said. Make sure that you know that the road is blocked off, so, uh, there's no confrontations. Um, other than that, that's all I have, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. Public Words Director Kevin Weller.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Few items here. Um, work is completed at sixteen eighty-one to twenty-third street. We did a water main upgrade and valve, thirty-six feet of water main and a brand new valve. Um, this will help us shed off the, the water between, uh, the west side of town or the, uh, yeah, west side of town and, uh, under the roadway. Harper have liberated him or repairs and for future repairs for the roadwork underneath the highway, for the water main of the highway. Um, final season cuttings, uh, will be final in the next week. Um, since the leaf drop is over with, we'll be able to go around to all public buildings and get our lease picked up from there for final pickup. So, staff will be out as long as weather is permitted. Um, over the last week, we had a diesel pump problem. Uh, fire department showed up at the, uh, public works. Our diesel pump had a, um, a leak on the pump. Uh, we didn't have any spell. It was contained in the containment underneath it. The pump was repaired and put back into service, so we're okay. Uh, repairs of the street light at, uh, two-two-three-zero-one Brookwood, they were, uh, completed about a week ago and ComEd has had the power put back on over there. Um, both lights are both on and working fine. No residential complaints. Um, residents head till November nineteenth to rake all leaf piles to the street. And I understand right now there are lots of these piles being raked down. Um, I hope that they're gonna take them away. They can call the village hall and they're gonna be told to, uh, to rake them up and put them in yard waste bags and be picked up by the scavenger. Um, if not, then I believe that Sherry might send Sue out and either give warnings or tickets at that point. Uh, but just so residents know, any piles they do not pick up in front of their house will end up in the neighbor's yard and they will call about that. I guarantee. Um, at this point right now, due to the leave program being over, we did send a sweeper out behind the, the leave program. So, the streets have been pretty much cleaned off. Um, so staff will be out doing puddle patching repairs. Uh, this will be for the, the winter here that's not here yet, but we're okay with this mild weather so far. Um, also, we had, uh, two heaters in our wellhouse that went down, one in our, uh, main station and one in our well three. These heaters are located in our chlorine rooms. Um, at this point, we haven't had an issue with the cold weather, but, uh, in the chlorine rooms, they tend to corrode a little bit more because we do get a little bit of off gas of chlorine and certain metal objects and they do corrode. So, occasionally, they have to be taken down and cleaned out internally. Uh, both were taken down and they're both working again, so we should be okay. Um, our next, uh, step after the leave program, every year, we start setting up for the Christmas, uh, season here. We start putting our, um, decorations up and pulling our Christmas tree down. And I did speak to, uh, trustee Jones about, uh, dropping off the trailer so they can get it prepared for the parade. And last, um, we were given a list from, uh, Sherry of fifteen homes that were, uh, not occupied with no water accounts. Of those fifteen homes, we found four that were still on or turned back on. We did shut those off and the resident list was, uh, given to Sherry for updates. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Uh, Community Development, Sherry Juzinski.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Code Enforcement has a hundred and ninety-nine tickets on December sixth court call. Um, a letter went out to IDOT in regards to C James Auto, um, on the building for repair or demo. I'll, uh, continue to follow up with the, uh, attorneys on this. Um, it looks like, um, they're requesting them to do the repairs and if they fail to do that, the village can, um, remove the building. I don't know financially if we have the means to do that, but that's what the letter says. I'll follow up with the attorneys in a few weeks to see if they've heard any, um, response from IDOT and I'll keep you posted. And Kevin, thanks for getting, uh, back to me with those houses. Those are the fifteen houses that we still have squatters in. Um, I turned that over to the police chief and Kevin on November eleventh, I think, or fifteenth. And, uh, Kevin gave me the his list back, so they're all shut off now, so that's a good move forward. Uh, that concludes my report.
Okay, before I go to the next one, I still want to get a status. Uh, someone give me a status between now and the end of the week of hometown hero so we can find out if that's gonna be taken care of before the end of the year.
I just got a call from Willie Winters, uh, yesterday, as a matter of fact, I forgot to mention it to you today. So, they're anticipating taking that down within the next week or two.
Thanks.
So, I, I asked them to make sure I get a couple of days in advance so we can get the dumpster done. So, that's, that's on the, that's on their list of things to do.
Thank you. Okay, Economic Development Director, Mr. Joseph Wizard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. As I reported at our last board meeting, uh, I've been working with, uh, Chicago Metropolitan Agency on planning uh, to work out the request for proposals for the village's comprehensive plan. The RFP was delayed, but for a good reason. Uh, we're working to enhance the scope of the project with a significant extra stormwater, uh, component funded through the CBG. Uh, we are waiting, uh, details and clarification to help us with the composition of the scope. Uh, we should have the work complete by the end of the week. Sock Village is among a handful of new consultant-led projects being scoped first. Our project was highlighted by CMAP to some fifty consultants who gathered for a presentation of new local technical assistance projects, which we expect to be competitively bid to consultants. The preview was an effective way to whet their appetite and many looked very eager. Over the course of the last several weeks, I've been working to evaluate the current business license process and the current business license holders. This is being done to make a recommendation for the business license flow and new application process. I'll be working with Community Development Director Sherry Juzinski reconciling our recommendations and having this information to the ordinance review committee for their review after the holidays. It is our hope that the village board can act on the recommendations in February in time for the business license renewals. Um, finally, uh, we'll be having a joint enterprise zone board meeting later this week. Um, members of the board, I did put some information with respect to a neighbor community, um, and a retirement. That's coming. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Reports of committees and commissions, beautification committee chairman, Linda Ty.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, beautification is going to decorate the hall on December second at nine A.M. So, if you're not doing anything, you can use your help. That concludes my report.
Um, I just want to add something before you guys get away. I just wanted to kind of let everyone know, um, it's, and she's very modest. She didn't say anything. But there's the new tree that's gonna be, um, put out in the hallway. It's a nine-foot, um, fir, balsam fir tree. It's maybe about seven feet wide. It's gonna be huge, but it was donated by our very own trustee, Linda Ty. Like I said, she's very modest, so when you see that tree, you see how big it is and it's gonna take at least two to three hours to decorate that particular tree because it is huge. So, every time you walk by, you can see that one of the trustees actually donated it. And, uh, I really appreciate it for that's first, that's the first ever, ever, you know, since I've been trustee that someone actually did that. So, you're very, I really wanted to mention it. I know you're looking down, didn't want to, didn't want to take it now, but I have to, I have to acknowledge that.
But if you have extra ornaments, we could really use it. Because I don't have any money left.
Um, okay, senior advisory council, I'm seeing Mr. Farmer here, so we'll move on to report of trust...
Does Mr. Mayor have a report from him?
Wow.
Okay. Uh, the next, uh, meeting for the senior advisory council will be November, I mean, December fourteenth at five o'clock. And also, we have, um, um, Mrs. Stan, uh, Dr. Stanberry coming by and three other groups that want to join in the senior center. So, anybody wants to come by and give suggestions and take a look at what we're doing. And also, we starting up a newsletter. Uh, so, come on by December fourteen at five o'clock and, uh, give us a hand. End of that report.
Okay. Reports of trustees and committees, public service committee trustee Bernice Brewer.
Okay, for the public service committee, I'm, uh, uh, the first half of the, um, recommendations that, uh, the group, um, is going to submit is, uh, has everything to do with historical data. So, what I want to do, I think it's about eight pages of what's been going on, like the water consumption and, uh, water main breaks and all that sort of stuff. Uh, I'd like to pass that on to Kevin. I'll give you a copy and he's gonna review it and then we're gonna sit down and talk. I, uh, we feel that it's good to give, uh, whoever's looking at this, a background of what's been happening with the water since, uh, uh, two thousand and twelve. So, that'll be ready, uh, end of December. So, uh, another thing is that, uh, getting the, um, counts for, uh, to determine the increase in the water rates has been sort of difficult because, uh, every time I go in and ask for these numbers, it seems like it's always an issue. So, I haven't been able to get the, um, counts of, the actual counts of the water users or the garbage bill or anything like that. So, um, I'm asking again for that information, which is public information, how many people we're billing every month. And, uh, I can't seem to get it. Now, I also have been talking to a couple of mayors, one for, uh, Mayor Gonzalez and also McDermott from Hammond. And they sent a letter back in twenty-ten indicating they were interested in, uh, supplying, uh, Sock Village water in there. Still interested, but they want a letter saying that we're going toward that and we're not gonna stop. But once we start, they want to stop. You know, they want us to keep going. And also, I, I referred to them that we need the allocation for Lake Michigan. We need to fix our infrastructure. So, those are the things that they're keeping in mind when they, uh, when they're gonna update the information. I gave you a draft copy of, uh, the letter and it also refers to the twenty-ten, uh, letter memos that they sent. And also, I got that information from Jim Cernack and he also suggested that I send, that we send, um, a request for them to upgrade it because it's gonna upgrade the cost because it's gonna take them a while just to evaluate how much it's gonna cost. And they also needed the consumption numbers, how much, uh, water we're using each month for the last three years. So, that's one reason why I needed those numbers. But, uh, those are all the things I'm working on. So, once I get all that information, we good to go. And that's the end of my report.
Okay, uh, trustee, the, what you're asking for, you say, you're like, can you give me a copy and I'll make sure that you can try to make sure that you get those questions answered?
Copies of what?
Of what you're requesting from Water Department.
Oh, I, I already got everything I told you. Uh, I got from Kevin.
Oh, I put you...
The numbers I gotta get from Mohan.
That's what I'm saying. Did you get, did you give it to me too so I can make sure that, you know, that even, I don't know if it fell through the cracks or whatever, but I need, give me a copy and I'll make sure that, uh...
Mr. Mayor, I had sent up, I don't know how many, four requests asking for the same information.
I, I...
Do you want it again? I'll, I'll send it. No, I'm sorry. Nope, I'm, I'm sorry. I'll send it again, requesting that information.
Thank you. I just, that's what I'm trying to avoid. Budget and Finance Committee trustee, uh, Roger Grant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Budget Finance Committee will be meeting tomorrow, uh, here at seven P.M. Uh, there was not a meeting in October, so, uh, we did, we hopefully tomorrow's meeting will be able to pick up where we left off and finish up the, uh, finance policy procedures so that we can present it, um, as soon as possible to the board. it as soon as possible to the board. And before we do that, I would still would like for the new treasurer to take a look at it as well and give her thoughts and inputs along with Mohan. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Parks and Recs trustee Calvin Jones.
This Saturday, well, I did mention it to the chief last week about utilizing the police station, one of their bays, to start decorating the slate for Santa.
Fire station.
At the fire station, yeah. This Saturday at 10:00, I'll just have to touch bases with him again, a reminder. And this Sunday, we'll be decorating the community center starting at 1:00. Santa Parade is the 9th. Starting at 10:00, the parade starts at 10:00, going around block to block through the whole community. Party starts around 3:00 in the community center. If you all didn't see the flyer for the basketball, after school basketball from 3:00 to 6:00 Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, that's been pretty good, pretty successful, getting maybe 30, 25 to 30 kids a day over there. That's been a pretty good turnout and should be a flyer back there. If not, I'll have to put some more back there and there should be flyers for the Christmas parade. And that concludes my report.
Thank you.
Got a question for you. Trustee Jones, when you're doing the Christmas parade, can you please go through weather stones? Where they do truck around? Can you go through the redstone? We obviously get for that.
I'll talk it over with him. I don't know if there was an issue or not, but I wasn't sure that they didn't go over there, but I'll definitely bring it up some more.
Definitely, we got kids too.
Okay. Okay, Ordinance Review Committee trustee Linda Todd.
Thank you. The next meeting is going to be this Thursday, November 30th, 6:30 p.m. here at the village hall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Public Safety trustee Elizabeth Zuppan.
The next public safety meeting will be next Wednesday, December 6th, 6:00 p.m. here at village hall. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Unfinished business, you've had, we've had plenty of times, you've done it numerous times, so I would like to at this point entertain a motion to adopt the resolution for the 2000, supposed to be 2017 strategic plan. That's this one here that everyone knows, and I'll entertain a motion for that.
What's the motion?
Say. It was moved by trustee Grant, seconded by trustee Jones. Any questions?
Question. I just want a little clarification on, this is good, I mean, I'm grateful and looking forward to working on it, working with it. If there's any, as we go through this, like you say, we'll meet time to time and we'll update and bring up forward any changes of anything. If there's any monetary changes or is this by us, vote on this now, is that blanking it or are we going to have to go back each and every, each time if we decide we want to make specific changes?
This is basically a blueprint, and so there's never nothing cut in stone, even the Constitution as amendment. So this is just giving the village a blueprint of what and how we're going to move forward with it. Absolutely. If there's something that we get to, and at that particular time, things may have changed in the village, and if they have, then yes, we can update it, but this is something that we need to put in place so we can have a blueprint to move forward, and that's basically what this is. Thank you. Any other questions? Madam clerk?
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Todd?
No.
Trustee Zuppan?
Yes.
Trustee Brewer?
Yes.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carried. New business, I'll entertain a motion for accounts payable to revise one in the amount of $322,106.08.
Mr. Mayor, you have to use the new number, $318,000.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, trustee.
What's the motion?
Say.
It was moved by trustee Zuppan, seconded by trustee Grant. Any questions?
Question, Mr. Mayor. On page one, you got, well, we have one, two, three, four entries for HR consultant and all of them over a thousand bucks, and the last one's over $4,000. And one of my many four requests, I asked for a copy of the Owens Group. And now, the information I got does not include a HR consultant yet. HR consultant's on here. I don't understand again why this is still on here. I have asked many times to provide me with the binder that shows the specific that addressed HR consultants. What was sent to me did not include HR consultant, so I don't understand why we're paying, and who are we paying for this HR consultant? Because Dr. Alicia Strauter is here again on page one, 850 for that. She's on page two, 850 for that. So you said that she's under professional services, but again, the package that was sent to me said we don't, it does not include professional services, but she's under here. So is she a Sauk Village employee, which you said she's not? So when did she come on board as a consultant and, you know, what is her hourly rate? And how long is she supposed to be here? All that sort of stuff, I don't know. I don't know if anybody else know. That's something I've been trying to get in the four requests. So I'd just like to know perfectly, what is her standing here? What is her employment agreement? How much is she getting paid? I would like to know that. That's something we need to know, all the money.
Is that it?
Oh, no.
Go again.
So I request that we take her off until we get this matter straightened out because I really don't know. And Joe, I know you asked me this because we had a nice conversation today. Also, we had on here for the economic development person, he has a business expense report. When did that come about? Maybe I would look at, he has an expense report on here of $174.30. I don't recall doing that, maybe, I don't know, but when did he start, he get expensive voucher for that? So. And another thing is that we asked for us to be notified when we have immediate checks. Now, this William Marlowe, I understand he's supposed to be reimbursed, but I never got an email saying that he should have been reimbursed, which is fine. We knew it was coming, so I don't understand why he couldn't be on a payroll, just like, I mean, on a council payroll, just like, why did we have to cut him immediate check? And another thing is with Popeyes, we knew Veterans Day was coming, why did we have to cut immediate checks? I understand that we had to pay, but there's no reason for immediate checks. But my biggest concern is that, I want to add one more. For Republican Services, one of my many four requests, I had asked for invoices for Republicans to find out, if you guys recall, we owe over $389,000 to Republic for some reason. I've been trying to find out why do we owe that? And I'm asking for copies of the invoice so I can do my own analysis. For some reason, you guys don't want to give it to me. I'd like to know why. So all these things relates to finance, and that's what we're supposed to be doing, looking at the money, especially for Republic. I have requested those invoices two or three times, you know, and now that it's turned out, this wasting public money, wasting taxpayers' money. When the information is there, they can give it to us. And then after I look at it, I'll say, well, okay, I don't see anything. You know, we do all this, we're under billing, and I think we run into the same situation we were three years ago because of, if I'm not mistaken, the current bills, they're overcharging us. I can't prove it without the numbers from Mohan, which I have been trying to get since I've been here. That's it for.
Okay, now, I'm going to try to go back to number one. Owens Group, in the budget, you saw HR, $48,000 a year. So that part was, you asked this question several times.
Yep.
And that's where, that we're using the Owens Group's vendor, in other words, their vendor, and we're using Dr. Strauter as HR from them. There's no contract. We're using that service from the HR, I'm sorry, from the Owens Group. Second, the, as you can see, again, with Dr. Strauter, HR services coming out of the police department, that's right. So she's doing that in, not extra, but in addition. So that's something she's doing and it's being done because we have to start. Last year and every other year that we've had contracts, we had our lawyers to start doing that work and double the amount. She's getting 85 hours an hour for a consultant, for the negotiation. As you can see, it's for negotiations and issues, starting with the police department. It's from the professional service. We were paying $165 an hour when we had the lawyers do it. So yes, we have to get started. The contract is going to be a lengthy contract, there's going to be a lot of changes, so it has to be started early. But to say that you never knew about the HR, it's in the budget now, and it's also itemizing the budget. And then also, you're talking about the garbage. Let me, let me explain that to you. Last year, I recall, oh, I think it was, you know, last year, I recall, you recall, I don't know if you were coming to the meeting, there was a new contract that was ratified by, at that time, the board. I was against it, but it raised the rate for the next 14 years for every resident here for their garbage. With that contract, it was stated that they will forgive the $336,000 that we owed them because it was a miscommunication between the village at that time and the public. So there was a miscommunication, either we didn't send out notices of increases and they didn't purge the houses that should have been purged and not taken care of, so they came up with disagreement. I asked to have it done a different way, but the board voted against it and voted to increase everybody's garbage 3% for the next 14 years. How can we get out of that contract? I really don't know, but it's going, it would cost a lot of money because I was asked, can we pay half now and half? Because we still have four years left on the contract that we had at the time. So we have four years to come up with the money, but it didn't happen. They did that, so all we think we can do now is deal with it unless we feel we have enough money to try to change it. I don't see how that's going to happen because now we're going to lose money for the next 14 years raising. So they have a contract with the village for 14 years to pick garbage up. Can we go out and get somebody else? Yes, but it's going to cost you. Is it worth it? I don't know yet, I haven't tried to do that. So that $336,000, I think it's more than that, but that money.
$389.
It's, pardon me?
$389.
Okay, well, that's $389, but if you read the contract, I don't know if you got a copy of it at the time, but you can get a copy of the contract, it's stated. And I'm going to say this real slow so you can underst, everybody can understand this. I'm going to say it real slow. That if we do not pay in 90 days, that $390,000 that you were talking about comes due to Republic and they still pick up our garbage.
Okay.
That's on the contract. So I just wanted to, we're not going to go back and forth, but those are the things I'm trying to explain what you had asked about and.
Wait, wait a minute now.
We're not going, we're not going.
We're not going back and forth, but.
What you doing?
No, I'm not.
Because I haven't had a chance to finish the last one yet.
I'll keep with you. Go on.
No, I mean, trustee, do you have, okay, that's why I asked you, were you through? If you were through, then I'll try to explain the William, $500 and the Popeye Chicken about the immediate checks. Those are the last two things you asked. I was going to try to spend, unless I do that, we're going to move on with this meeting. The Popeye's Chicken wanted their money. They couldn't wait until our board meeting, and if you notice, we didn't have a board, we didn't have a meeting after, after that because we, Thanksgiving came. So we didn't have a chance to do that, so that's what happened with that. And Mr. Marlowe came to the village hall. He paid his obligation. He wanted his money like now. He couldn't wait for the next board meeting, and this was last week, so that's why he got a immediate check.
Mr. Mayor, that had, I appreciate the explanation you just gave, but it still does not explain why I can't get the invoices. I could look over Republicans' account. I understand that we owe them money, but I'm saying, we're running into the same kind of problem that we had three years ago, and my intentions is to let you know that something's not right the way, the way we're being built. I know for a fact that Sheri sends out a monthly billing to, a monthly list of vacancies to the garbage people where they should be adjusting the bill every month. Every month, we get one consistent bill with the same numbers. This town has people moving out in it every, every month or so. Republican, the information provided to me does not show any adjustments to the bills at all. Something's wrong with that picture. Secondly, back in, when we owed this $389,000, I was told that it was looked over, the invoices were looked over. I can't get a copy, I like to look at the bills. That's something we owe. We have to go back and pay it again, that's not fair to residents. There's no reason why I can't get the bills and take a look at them. If it's public information, why can't I look at the bills?
What bill are you talking about?
The invoices, I'm sorry, the invoices, the Republic invoices, what they demand payment.
How would that tell you if we're behind? How would that tell you that the bill?
I'm trying to come up with the $389.
I'm asking a question, how would that invoice tell you who we're not building or who didn't get billed? How would that invoice?
The invoice only shows a dollar amount.
Yes, it does.
Okay, and it would tell me, along with what Mohan is giving me, tells me how much we paid. So if we haven't paid them enough money, what they requested, you know, that means that we underbilled. But if they overpaid, you know, overbilled us and that means that.
How would you know they, we overbilled?
By looking at the invoice.
How would, the invoice would not tell you if we overbilled. If they overbilled us, the invoice would not, they billed us accordingly. How would the invoice tell if we overbilled?
They're not billing us accordingly. They, they're billing us, they set price of houses, they build them, they're not billing us, because they don't reconcile anything. Even though Sheri sends the information to them, they don't delete or add anything.
I didn't know that.
Because from the previous invoices, they say, I have some invoices, I don't have all of what I need.
Trustee, how do you know? Because what you're talking about is day-to-day operations. How would you know that if they're not billing correctly? How would you know that?
Because.
Unless you have, everybody's bill in front of you, how would you know that?
If Sheri sends the length of, the number of people that we are billing and then the number of vacant houses, then Republicans send us the bills according to the number they sent in. They send us one cent every month and they shouldn't have it.
Okay, I got a suggestion. I'll be here every day. What you're asking for, like I asked you before, come to my office and we could sit down and go over what you're asking, become back and forth now, everyone does that, sit here and listen to, let's go back and forth. We can, we can go, we can sit down. I'm sorry, I'll let you guys speak.
Well, I would like to know.
Okay, you had a chance to speak at public comment.
Well, you said you was waiting, I don't want to.
I'm just, you know, I'm just hoping that we can. I'm just, you know, just, I'm just hoping that we can get the meeting done correctly. Instead, we're not going, I'm not going to do our first.
Okay.
Thank you. But what I'm saying is, trustee, if you can, come, we can sit down, I can try to get things pulled. But in order for you to know how much a person owes, you have to see what they were charged, what they were billed.
I said, individual, I said, this Republic.
That's the only way you can find out if they were overcharged or undercharged. That's the only way you can find that out. Showing, an invoice does not tell you if the client, which in this case would be the residents, is underbilled or overbilled. There's no way to tell that by the invoice. You have to go through bill by bill to see, and then you'd have to actually sit down and, and go over the bills to make sure that they were billed correctly. You can't do it with an invoice. Like I said, we can, we can, I'm here, we can sit down and do that instead of going through the other factors for you. We can do it this way. So I'm not going to go back and forth anymore. We can, I'm offering to give you time when you want to. Let me know when you're coming, and I'll block that time out, and we can, we can go from there.
I'll be here tomorrow. What time is your business?
What time?
At, at twelve, at noon.
Okay.
Okay, and Mr. Mayor...
That's it?
No, no, Mr. Mayor, you indicated on here, you got a, he got a meeting, is what you said?
I didn't say anything. I'm asking you. I do, right?
No, he asked questions.
I'm, I'm trying, I'm, I'm, is this question you were going to ask me? Is it the question that you're asking me? Is it having anything to do with accounts payable, which we're on?
Yes.
What else? Because I asked you at the end of your talking, was that, was that it? And you said yes.
I'm, I'm asking for clarification.
I said, I asked you, was, was you, was you through asking question? You said yes.
I am through asking question, I want clarification on something you said.
Go ahead, Ma'am.
Okay. The, you indicated that Dr. Strauter is, is being paid eighty-five dollars an hour. When did we get that information?
Okay, is that, that your question?
Yeah, I mean, I'm just going by what you, you said.
Because you said you've done research, I'm sure you've done that research.
No, because you, I can't get a copy of the contract.
You'll get a copy of everything you asked for tomorrow.
Okay. Say, come.
Any more questions on regards to accounts payable? Madam Clerk, please call the robe.
Trustee Brewer?
No.
Trustee Grant?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Tate? Trustee Thibault?
Yes.
Trustee Zuppan?
Yes.
Motion is carried. Journal comics from the Board of Trustees will start with trustee Thibault.
Nothing at this time, thank you.
Trustees Brewer?
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate...
You're trusting me, okay.
Yeah, I said, Mr. Mayor, right?
Okay.
Okay. I appreciate you inviting me out to get copies of what I need in order to get my work done. However, you have said, come to your office before, and you also said, come and ask Mohan. Mohan, as soon as you get there, he can't respond, and, and when I come to see you, you know, we've always been, we're always being interrupted. So tomorrow, when I come and ask for all these things, we won't have that problem, right?
I can't promise that. I can, I promise that I won't be interrupted. Now, that part I can tell you, because if there's something that happens, then I have to. I can't sit and tell you that we can have two hours, because that doesn't happen with me here every day.
Okay, I'd like to...
But I will make sure that we can, can get things out.
Okay, I'd like to let you know that I'm there, and I'm here every day. I can pull my own information, you know, diet, I mean, just, just to let you know, just to keep the employees, you know, so they won't think that I'm overwhelming them. I can pull all my information myself, look through the file myself. I'll have to use direct. And I'm available to that.
That's your comment?
Yeah, that's my comment, and I appreciate it all. Don't take it far.
Trustee Joe?
December seventh is Parks and Recs committee meeting, seven o'clock here at the Village Hall.
Trustee Zuppan?
Nothing, thank you.
Trustee Grant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, just say that, you know, the, the bill from Comcast was, you know, caught us all off guard, I'm, I'm sure. I'm hoping that, I mean, that's something that probably shouldn't happen. I can understand, you know, possibly, one, maybe slipping through the cracks, but two, you know, two months, that's, that's a little excessive. I'm hoping that with the new treasurer comes aboard, that, you know, she can help out Mohan as much as possible to catch some of these, these drop balls, and hopefully, she can alleviate some pressure that's on him, whatever that may be. I feel like too that we have somebody here to help out, so I look forward to working with her. And that's all I have.
Thank you. I just wanted to say, I hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving. I, I don't really have much left to say. I kept you guys have long enough for, for that, but I'm just hoping that, as far as the Comcast trustee Grant, that's why I brought to the board tonight rather than trying to get in, because some things need to be brought out, because I was kind of, didn't understand a lot of things also, so that's what the board is here for, to vote the money in and out. So, and I appreciate you guys paying the bills. With that being said, I accept the motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Good evening, everyone.